A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks everyone for coming. Happy Tuesday. First thing on our agenda, we have a consent agenda. We've got a couple employment contracts and a couple pay increases for conservation.
I'll move that motion.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carried. So first on the agenda, we have a public hearing. Grant Anderson, Community and Economic Development Planner for MAPPA. It's a public hearing on the Carson and Macedonia downtown facade architectural plans and documents. Grant, do you have anything you want to put out first, or you want to wait?
Motion to open public hearing.
I have a few comments I'll make briefly, but just whenever appropriate.
Yeah, one second. So, roll call.
Chairman Schultz.
Aye.
Supervisor Groby.
Yes.
Bell.
Aye.
Wickman.
Aye.
And Drake.
Aye.
Okay, Grant, go ahead.
Okay, so this is a hearing to fulfill the requirement of Chapter 26 of the Iowa Code that covers construction bidding. The Carson Macedonia project is ready to be bid for construction. The budgeted grant amount for the project in both communities is $774,064. And that's for nine buildings total, five in Carson, four in Macedonia. Last week, a public hearing notice was put out in the Daily Nonpareil, and all the proposed construction bid documents were made available to review online or at the board's office. And as far as I know right now, no written comments were received, so that's all I really had to say unless there are any questions.
No, I don't think so. Is there any comments from the public on this one? Hearing none.
Motion to close.
Got a motion to close? Got a second? Roll call, please.
Chairman Schultz.
Aye.
Supervisor Groby.
Yes.
Bell.
Aye.
Wickman.
Aye.
Drake.
Aye.
Okay, we now have a public hearing. Next, we have the discussion decision regarding the authorization to initiate the bidding process for Carson Macedonia downtown revitalization.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion to second. Any discussion?
When is that going out for bid, Grant?
That'll start next week. There will be a public notice that goes out, and then the architects will submit everything through the Iowa Contractor Clearinghouse.
So this is a motion to approve the public notice for bids for asbestos removal? Grant?
I'm still working on an alternative to take care of that. The asbestos work has to be done for construction, but we can still bid out for construction prior. I would prefer not to have to bid it out a third time, so if the state will allow us to do it this way, I would like to do a... I can't remember what the exact terminology is, but it would be a competitive proposal type situation. But I think we would be communicating directly with the select group of contractors that have done this kind of work in the state.
So the bid would be for asbestos removal and construction? Is that what we're doing?
No, sorry, this is just construction.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I get it in the minutes right.
Okay, well, there's no other discussion. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, motion carried. Grant, thank you. Appreciate it.
Alright, thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay. Next, we have Greg Barnston. We have a... Greg, you're still on the call, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we got you next on the agenda. It's a discussion decision on approving the application for use of Potawatomi County grounds for Iowa 99 County Bible Reading Marathon from July 21st through July 23rd, 2020. Greg, do you have anything you want to say to this at all, or?
Well, just a comment. We've done this at least the two previous years without issue, and it's been approved. And it's a worthwhile endeavor that should not be disturbing really anybody. I don't anticipate that there'd be a large number of people there. I'm attempting to also, since, you know, a lot of people are concerned about even going out to enlist people to pray at home, but we do want to have people there, myself, my wife will probably be there, and some others to pray during that period of time. We may not need all three days, but I want to have permission to use the grounds during that time.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we've got a motion approved. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Greg, thank you, and good luck on your event.
Can you tell me where the location of that's going to be over by the church? Over by the church?
That's right.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Alright, well, thank you, Greg. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Alright, so the next one, and I'll just give a little background on this one real quick. Last year, when we appointed the new commissioners to the Potawatomi County Veterans Commission, we made an error on our documentation such that their terms were off. So, the terms were supposed to be two years and three years. On our paperwork, we had fat fingered and put one year. So this is just to correct those oaths of office. So first we have on this agenda here is just a discussion decision to approve the corrected term dates. When I'm done, when we're done with the vote, I will bring those down to you folks to sign real quick, and then we'll keep going, so.
I'll make that motion to make those changes for Ellen Fritz, Jesse Shea, and William Dooley.
Sir, go. Any discussion? I guess the only I'd say is, you know, sorry that we had to drag you in here to do this, but want to make sure we do it right, so. Yeah, with that, I'll call. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay.
Thank you all.
Well... They want us to redo the oath, so I'll just have you guys come up here and I'll read them to you real quick. We'll just do them all at the same time. Okay, so if you want to hold your right hand, I say your name.
I am Shrek.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Iowa?
The Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully discharge the appointed duties as commissioner?
That I will faithfully discharge the appointed duties as commissioner.
Of the veteran affairs?
Veteran affairs.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
As defined in Iowa Code 35B.
As defined in Iowa Code 35B.
Okay. Guys, thank you very much. I apologize again for bringing back this one, but... I'm gonna take a picture of this. Sure.
I want to see Ellen's.
Ellen right there.
Oh, she changed it? Okay, good. Put your name on the bottom of all of them, because in the drop box, it has my name on it.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Okay, good.
Okay. So I'll have you guys sign. Ellen, yours is right here. Do you have yours? You don't know William Dooley? Guys, thank you. Appreciate it. Now that our commissioners are legit, that's good. Guys, thanks again. I appreciate it.
Ellen, thank you.
Okay, so that's corrected now. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Leanne Gifford. There's obviously more folks in here. So Sheriff Danker, Police Chief Tim Carmody from Council Plus. This is a discussion decision to approve and authorize the chairman to sign Southwest Iowa Training Facility Revised 28E Agreement between the City of Council Plus and Potawatomi County. I guess we can... You guys want to talk first, and then we'll go? Chief, do you want to kick this off at all, or do you have anything you want to say before we go?
Absolutely. I'm Tim Carmody. I'm the police chief for Council Plus, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning. This... We're here to talk about an opportunity to expand and enhance the partnership that's existed for 15 years. Some 15 years ago, we built the training center together. The city owns the property, but the county and the city came together to build the training facility. Not only is it used by our two departments, but it's used by 34 different agencies around the metro. Our request is, there were some operations that were started initially, and when I found out about it, we were not following the letter of the MOU, so we updated the MOU to reflect what we're actually doing. And part of those changes, Leanne's done some great work on that, to help us define what that means. And there's one addition to it. The addition is, our hope is to build 100-yard rifle range with 10 lanes. Currently, I believe there's only one other range in the metro that's available to law enforcement for that purpose. This would allow us not only to help our officers and our deputies achieve that and use that resource, but it would also bring a revenue in to help sustain the facility and defray the cost of the taxpayer. This document has been updated. The changes, I don't think, are dramatic, but they reflect the changes that we're doing on a daily basis. For example, in 2017, we sat down with the sheriff's office and talked about some renovations that needed to be done to the facility. We identified about $150,000 worth of work that needed to be done to bring it up to standard, and we split that evenly. And we worked that out before the budget process and talked through it, and it's a great partnership, and I just want to continue that. The other two things that Leanne has clarified here is an exit strategy. If someone decides they want to separate, there's a clear process to do that, and then furthermore, there's a way to identify what a capital expense is. So when we talk about it in the budget, it makes sense. Questions for the board?
I guess, as far as the firing range goes, I just want to make sure we're all clear. The amount that would be asked of the county would be not to exceed $1 million, is that...
About 18 months ago, we did some preliminary research on what it would cost to build the range. The approximate cost is around $750,000 for the range facility, in other words, the targets and the other infrastructure, and then the other parts around it to make it a no-blue-sky range, so that around doesn't leave the range ever, would bring it to about 1.1 or 1.2 total. So we... The suggestion is that we split that evenly between the two entities. And we believe that we're going to go out to bid with that, and then we'll find out a better idea of what it's actually going to be at that point.
Okay, thank you. Sheriff Danker, did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
Just I think would be a great addition. That was intended... We intended to build that when the facility was originally constructed, but, you know, with budget restraints that we had, we were not able to get that 100-yard range. We pretty much now... Most officers have a patrol car being in their vehicles, or they have access to one. And the qualification is important. We... ILEA, the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, allows us to use a 50% reduced target to qualify, unlike on a 50-yard range, but that is not ideal. You know, we really do need a 100-yard range to be able to do the correct qualifications with the rifle. So we've... We have used, in the past, there was different ranges. There was one out by Atlantic, where State Radio was, and we did utilize that occasionally. It's just, it's not easy to find a good 100-yard range to be able to do the qualification. So things have changed through the years. When I first started, we used to have shotgun, handgun. That's pretty much what it was. But now, things progress, and they have a patrol car being, and it is... It'd be a real asset to be able to have a 100-yard range to be able to far qualifications.
Thank you. Just anything from the board?
No, the only thing, and I know we've been working on this a long time since I've been up here. It's been a topic of discussion. The only thing I saw on here, on the page, well, I guess it doesn't have a page, it's Leanne. And this is, I don't know what version this one is, but it's...
If it's the one you got yesterday, that's the latest version.
On here, number 11, it just grammatically supersedes all prior. It just says AL and not.
Okay.
And AL. And then, so would there be... For, when you refer to capital improvements, are you also thinking in regards when you hire professional services, i.e. what engineers or whatever? Pardon?
Yes, sir. For a project of this magnitude, we would consider that part of the capital expense.
Okay.
So it would be included in the whole package.
So are you considering to do an RFP for professional services for this thing, or?
We're talking about looking at a list of providers. One of the challenges that we have to stay close to, Scott, is that we have an existing range control system. So there's only one company that does that, so it kind of limits a single source. But for the rest of the construction aspect of it, yes.
Okay. And then, you know, I know that, and I've read the old editions of this thing for 15 years. Like you said, we have a tendency maybe not to follow the letters that are written there, or those documents don't get handed off to the next person, because we all, you know, the players all change. But I'd like to at least see something in at least quarterly or biannally, some sort of rough accounting of what's going on down there submitted to the sheriff and to the board, you know, so.
We submit an annual budget? I'm sorry.
Right, I know, from an annual budget. I see you guys do that, but just from awareness factor that everybody knows what's going on.
What kind of report would you like? The number of people that attend, or?
Yeah, just your... I don't know if you guys just do like a quick book sheet or...
Quarterly, do you want a quarterly?
Yeah, quarterly or semi-annually, whichever. I mean, I'm sure you're looking at it, you are probably looking at it on a monthly basis.
We do. We track that very closely from the budgetary perspective, but also from the quality of the training and the volume of training that we provide there.
Yeah, just something to shout out people through their kind of monies and stuff like that. I mean, it's just education for all the board members.
Well, it's life safety. I mean, the great example of that is, we have that hostage situation. Without the ability for those officers to train at distance, it's going to be that much harder. It's even more true for the county, because their distances from people and targets are going to be longer.
Yeah.
So it comes into play even more.
Exactly. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chief Carmody, you said there's an MOU?
This one?
Oh, 28E agreement. You're calling it an MOU, okay. The issue I have with this, with this agreement, if I can, is back in, gosh, 1980, when this courthouse was built, there was some language in the agreement that turned, came back to really cause an issue between the city and the county. And I think that this 28... I don't have a problem with the project. It's up to the county to determine if we have the funds to do it. But when we address any kind of an expense, it should be noted in the 28E agreement, where the money's coming from, how much it's going to cost, that kind of thing. If we don't have that, we're putting ourselves back in a position we were in 40 years ago. I just don't think that's the right thing to do. So I think this thing needs to be revised, again, include the costs of the agreement, of the quote 100-yard rifle range, and put it in there. It's not in there. I requested it to be in there, so.
I don't think the document's that static. I think over time, things change, and we have to adapt to that, so. I don't think it's necessarily to be in the 28E agreement.
Be an addendum.
How much money the county's going to contribute to a capital project?
Yeah, if we agree to it, both parties agree to it.
Where's that?
We don't know what the capital project will be. If it's above $10,000, they have to bring it here, and we have to decide whether we agree to it.
Right now, according, the way I read it, is it includes the rifle range in the 28E agreement.
But we haven't approved it yet.
If I may, he brings up a great point, and it's already defined in the document. The document talks about on an annual basis, if we're going to do a capital project and get that too, we'll work it out with the sheriff's office and define what that is and present it during the budgetary process. You have a budget process that you look at every year. It's already clearly defined there, and it's up to you to approve or deny that.
No, no. Exactly.
So you say this agreement, then Chief Carmody is not committing any funds?
No, sir, I didn't say that. What I said was, it's already defined, but it's not defined in this document. It's a chicken and the eggs. The challenge is, you can't define what that's going to be until we go out and ask that question. We can't go out and ask that question until we have an agreement in place that says we're going to work this together. That's all this is, is it's a partnership. And your point about the building the courthouse is a great example. I have worked so hard in my career here to make sure that we have guidance and clear understanding, so that when I leave this chair, the next person that sits down is in a better place and has that guidance available.
And that's what I wanted, too.
That's what it is.
It doesn't identify the cost, but you're asking... Wait, wait. Justin, and my understanding is that you're asking the county to provide up to $1 million for this project.
No, I said it, you split it in half. And as I mentioned before, the cost is between 1.1 and 1.2. That was a year and a half ago, because that's how long it's taken to get to this point. Our goal is to get this done in the next fiscal year, because there's funding that has to be spent within that timeframe. So we've been very transparent throughout this process, and we plan to be, you know, going forward. Sheriff Danker and I work very hard to make sure that the board understands where this money's going and how it's being spent and being invested. It's to benefit the taxpayers, and it's to keep our people safe.
And I'm not opposed to the firing range at all. Want to make sure that we have everything covered in the document, so we don't end up in that position we were in, what, two years ago?
So I think that's a...
That document was not done properly, and it shouldn't even be germane to this subject.
So if I can talk... Actually, I think that's a good, a good... Yeah, my name's Chad Hannon, 109 Applewood Court at Council Plus. I don't know if you guys see the addressing or not. A council member here in Council Plus. I've been working with the chief on this, and Leanne through our city attorney's office. To your point, Tim, I think it's, I think it's a timely comment. So obviously, two years ago, there was a pretty public issue about the law enforcement center, and as the chief was working to get a bond passed for our police station. And thanks to Leanne's help and to the city attorney's office, I think that we address the, you know, the actual termination. If, for whatever reason, we decide that either this doesn't work for us, or the sheriff's department doesn't work for them, I think that that's very clearly determined in number four, is the term. And I think that was something that was important to all of us, that we outlined that as we update this 28E. It does give us an opportunity to say, alright, you know, for whatever reason, if the police department becomes so big that we need that facility, or likewise for the sheriff's department, there's an opportunity for that governing body to take possession of that property. And I think that that's a good lesson learned for all of us. And then I guess, to the point about the financial commitment, I also think that that's rather clearly defined in number seven, the capital expenditures, stating that we will share in capital expenditures. And the dollar amount that was agreed on is $10,000. And in my day job, I run the purchasing department for Ameristar. So I think I know a little bit about this, and I think $10,000 is a very generous number. It allows day-to-day operations to proceed, but if anything exceeds that, we can still be accountable to the taxpayers, which is really what I think all of us are here for. So I do see that as a nice addition, and it helps clear the air, I feel.
Great question, that $10,000, does that, and I haven't read through this, $10,000 for the project, or $10,000 to cost to the county?
$10,000, anything costing over $10,000 is presumed to be a capital expenditure.
Right, right, right.
Yep. It's just a trigger point.
So it's separate from the rifle range issue?
I understand that, but it wasn't $10,000. It was $10,000 for the project, not $10,000 cost to the city or the county.
It would be a $10,000 expense, and then obviously...
I just want to make sure that you, and I'm sure you did, Leanne, have that specifically, sort of it. By the time they split the cost, it could be $15,000 for the project, $7,500 per party.
The statement reads, "The replacement or repair of fixtures or improvements with costs in excess of $10,000." So, yeah, that would, to your point, that would be total costs, not individual contributions.
Thanks for understanding, Mike.
I got you. I got you.
Chief Carmody, then when this goes out for bid, do you come back to the governing bodies with the cost?
Yes, we would absolutely go back. We have to go before council and address it with council, and then we come back to the board and do the same thing here.
Awesome.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? I guess I just want, number one, to say thank you all for working on this. I know it's been a long time coming. I also want to say that, you know, Mr. Wickman has brought up very valid points, and things that he said is really important, because we obviously are operating in very tight budgets going into the future, especially with our capital plan, and it's going to cause probably some adjustments to our plan. On the flip side of that, I think investing in our law enforcement is, especially at a time like this, is one of the most important things we can do as a board, and I'll say the same for the council when you address this issue. But right now, with everything going on, the protests, the riots that are going on, and everyone's talking about defunding the police, and I think, you know, from our perspective, I think, at least from mine anyways, that we shouldn't be defunding. We should be making investments in our enforcement, so.
Yeah, and both chief and sheriff understand that, you know, it's human capital that makes this happen. And, you know, the landscape for that human capital is probably pretty much like a desert right now. People are jumping up and down, and their mom and dads aren't probably saying, yeah, why don't you try law enforcement as a career? And, you know, what's that look like in another 25 or 30 years? And, you know, I mean, it's interesting times. I think we need to give them all the tools and give them all the training we can give them. And I think we should be proud as citizens of Paw County of what we got for law enforcement, you know, and our communities and such, so. Thank you, and I appreciate you guys coming over and working with us on this and making it better for everybody.
Thank you. I, you know, I just hope this is the first of many partnership projects we have with the city. And, you know, I think in the end, it'll help us save taxpayer money, and it's in the best interest of both parties to do this, so. With that, I will... Does anyone else have anything to say, I guess?
One more thing. Sorry. The council will vote on this on July 13. And it sounds like we have unanimous consent that we're eager to move forward with this. So you'll get a update from the city clerk on the fourth.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. I'll bring down the main copy for you to sign.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your support. Motion carried. Guys, thank you all. Appreciate you coming. Have a good rest of your day.
Congratulations.
Thanks, ma'am.
Let's take a quick five-minute recess here, and we'll come back.
I just want to throw this out there. I've got a card that says, I've got an interested buyer in 1400 Big Lake Road in Council Plus. They pay cash for it, so. I want to sell to jail in the sheriff's office. They say we got an interested buyer.
Do they live on Madison?
No, I just, his name's Clint. I've got a phone number, so.
Victor, mention, no. I'm kidding.
No, I'll thank you, too.
Thank you, Chief.
I think she did really well. She looks a lot like her daddy.
Wasn't too loud.
Bye-bye.
That's not a good thing, looking like her daddy.
See you, Roger.
I guess I've seen him before. I've never seen Chad Hannon before.
Oh, is that right?
No. I don't even know who else is on the city council.
Well, you got a real son, and then you got...
That's a head, yeah.
You got a little... Joe, Joe, just tell him.
Yeah, no, no, I've seen her those two years.
I was thinking that people weren't able to be doing a bunch of claims the last two weeks of the month.
Even their bulk cut off the 22nd. And then we start doing, like, things that, a lot of the credit card companies, they couldn't get that final statement printed. they couldn't get that final statement printed, and we won't let them give it to us ahead of time without the final statement. Till the 24th, 25th.
What was the rush on the sheriff's one?
They were still in the vehicles yet for this year's budget. They hadn't gotten their, I don't, where is Stan? I read that dealership, name is at Des Moines.
I thought we'd just done that a couple of weeks before.
I don't think they had gotten them all. That was my, when I was talking with the sheriff's office.
So do all the laws go into effect on July 1st, if she doesn't?
I think if she doesn't veto it, I think 30 days, then it automatically.
After July 1st?
I think 30, if she hasn't signed anything, or vetoed anything for 30 days, then I think it goes after July 1st. That's what I understand it.
I'd like to know when she's gonna sit down and have, I don't know, she's having discussions with Isaac already, or what? Those funds that she's got available for.
Oh.
This broadband deal.
She's got money for broadband?
Yeah, she's got a bunch.
Yeah, that was like one of her main priorities for the year.
Well, I suppose she's meeting it up to the telecoms with grants? They're running, well, they did Carson, they finished Carson, now they're running up Oakland. I don't know what they got in Crescent.
I think they're still running that, oh, shoot, I don't know. It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't high-tested, was it? What was it called?
The tested app?
Yeah.
You know, I tried that, and I was using my wifi at home, it wouldn't let me use the wifi. At first it did, and it was on like 900 or 1,000, or I don't remember.
I think we got everyone back. Let's reconvene. As soon as I find my script. Okay. Next, we have David Hayer, Chief Information Officer, discussion or decision to approve donation of five laptops to the Junior Jackets Robotics Program.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
What, we just did, what did we do, three to Dodge House?
The Dodge House.
To the Dodge House? So these five are, are coming from which department?
I don't know exactly which department. I think probably the attorney's office, but they were, were replaced during our loan replacement cycle.
Okay.
And they are extra that would go either for sale or recycled.
Okay, so, did someone reach out to you, or how did, how did, how did these organizations, how do we?
I reached out to our community services department, and they sent an email to their contacts.
Oh, okay.
Just a general group email.
Yeah, 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 okay.
To contact me if they had any needs.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay.
Sounds like a good deal.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Becky Belt, Finance Auditor's Office, discussion decision to approve Resolution 6420, resolution fixing a date for a meeting on the proposition to authorize a loan agreement in the issuance not to exceed 600,000 general obligation capital loan notes for essential county purpose, the proceeds of which notes will be used for, used to provide funds to pay for costs of equipping, remodeling, or reconstruction of public buildings, including equipping the jail with programmable logic control upgrades. I guess, does someone want to sneak out there and grab, I think there's some people that are here for this. Jason, you might grab them?
Oui.
So I think what, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Becky, it sounds to me like this is to give us the option to bond for these, if we decide to do that. It's not necessarily committing to doing this. So I, I want to make that clear, because it's not, although if we vote to approve this, this would basically just give us the ability to do this. It's not saying that we are going to yet. So I want to make that very clear, so we're not walking out here thinking that, oh, we just got.
So when, when we did pre-bond levies in March, we held several hearings to give ourselves the authority to issue bonds, so we could levy a debt service tax with our budget certification. At that, currently, we are also discussing some TIP bonds. We're also discussing something further on the agenda. And before we do make the actual action steps to issue the bonds that we said we were going to, we have the ability to hold other hearings and then bring all of those authorities to issue bonds for, to the table, and make a decision when we do go for an auction, a sale of bonds, and put those projects on. When these folks came in a couple of weeks ago and presented some projects that sounded also public safety, bond-worthy, could possibly be considered, we discussed briefly. I wanted to talk to the attorneys, let them know, here's what we've already issued. ADD cards early in March was part of a, a discussion. I think the project's grown bigger. Took all the information from the meeting a few weeks ago, sent that to Alers and Cooney. They deciphered what wasn't already given authority to issue bonds for, created these two additional hearings, just to give the board the option to. It does not mean we're issuing bonds for these projects, but if you choose to, a few weeks down the road, these can be included without starting the process over.
Okay, the other question I'd have is, does this have a timestamp on it? Like, is there, say we don't revisit this for another month or so, does that affect it at all?
This is just like what we did in March. You gave yourself the ability to do so, should you so choose.
Could this be considered as, if we considered following through with this bonding, could that be done in next fiscal year?
I could verify that, but I believe you've got the public hearings out of the way, so yes. If we don't, if say we don't include it in the issue we do here in the next couple of months, and choose to bond again next spring, we could visit and make sure that these are also still included. But you're, you're giving yourself the ability to do so.
Okay.
So do we need to, other than the motion to approve and authorize the board to sign Board Resolution 6420, do we, do we have to?
You can put a public hearing.
Pardon?
This, this, today is to set the date for public hearing for July 21st.
Are we setting it for the 21st of July?
Correct.
Okay, July, at 10 o'clock?
That would be what I'm asking, so 10 o'clock would be fine.
I will make that motion. 10 o'clock, July 21st, 2020, at 10 o'clock.
And if you notice that timing, that is why I decided to go ahead and get this out there, whether you plan to issue bonds or not, but let's get this portion out of the way, so it's not down the road and holding up any other issuances.
Okay, so that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call.
Chairman Schultz.
Aye.
Supervisor Wickman.
Aye.
Mel, Drake.
Aye.
And Groby.
Aye. Okay, next one's Resolution 6520, resolution fixing date for a meeting on the proposition to authorize loan agreement and issuance of not to exceed 900,000 general obligation capital loan notes for essential county purposes to provide funds to pay for the cost of equipping, remodeling, or reconstruction of public buildings, including equipping the courthouse with access control and video surveillance in the jail with camera upgrades.
Same exact thing, only how it was broken apart project-wise by the attorneys.
Is there?
Motion to approve Board Resolution 6520, fixing date is July 21st, 2020, 10 o'clock.
Okay, we got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, you got a motion, second. Any discussion on this one? All in favor signify by saying aye.
All bide aye.
Or roll call, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Chairman Schultz.
Aye.
Supervisor Wickman.
Aye.
Mel, Drake.
Aye.
And Groby.
Aye.
Okay, looks like we have a third on your Resolution 6620, resolution fixing date for meeting on the proposition.
Oh, you missed the number three, the engagement agreement with Alers and Cooney. It's number three.
All right. As I was. Bond council engagement agreement with Alers and Cooney dated June 25th, 2020, regarding general obligation capital loan notes, regarding the 600,000 general obligation capital loan notes and the 900,000 general obligation capital loan notes.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify.
One question.
Go ahead.
We don't spend any money with Alers and Cooney until we decide we're gonna move forward with the bonding, is that correct?
Except for proceedings that we do, where we send money for them on the UR development. Yes, just our professional services.
I'm tracking.
But on the bonds specifically, yes, until we actually issue bonds, correct?
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, now we're back on track. Item four here. Resolution 6620, resolution fixing date for meeting on the proposition authorized loan agreement in the issuance of not to exceed 8 million in general obligation, local option sales, and service tax bonds, the proceeds of which bonds will be used to provide funds to pay the cost of acquisition of land and construction and equipping of county shops to services of secondary roads.
Motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Groby, seconds. Any discussion on this one?
It's the same discussion we had on the other ones. This is only if we so choose to go forward or not. Are we fixing a date on this?
Also, July 21st. And at 10 a.m.
Is it okay for your motion to second to?
Yep, July 21st, right.
Okay, motion second, any last discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Schultz.
Aye.
Supervisor Wickman.
Aye.
Mel, Drake.
Aye.
And Groby.
Aye.
All right, so item five here, bond council engagement agreement with Alers and Cooney dated June 25th, 2020, regarding the general obligation, local option sales, and services tax bonds not to exceed 8 million. Is there a motion?
And just, so, you know, Leanne did review these, nobody had asked that, but they were reviewed by the attorney's office.
Okay.
So they need different engagement agreements because of different types of budgets?
Different bugs? Okay.
Different funds?
Yeah.
There will be, so the, the series that included the two public hearings we did now, that'll be our bond series 2020A. Should we, the other item that's not on today's agenda, but the UR bonds, if we do TIP bonds, that'll have a different series of issuance. This on itself would be, get a third series. We would do one big issuance for the cost savings, but the series will be separate.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And second. And any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Okay, other business, approved employment agreement between Southwest State Juvenile Detention Center and Don Ulich for July 21st, 2020, through June 30, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, last, I guess, is there anything for the good of the group before we move on to the adjournment? Okay, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.